Well, it's seven o'clock by the phone here. In the absence of Chairman Blanchett, Friday morning I was asked by the members to chair this meeting. Could we have a motion in effect? Second?
Second.
Motion and second on me being chairman pro tem for the meeting. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Your honor.
Pledge of allegiance. If you all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, rules of order. We run routinely by Robert's rules and the rules that we adopted at the meeting in November, organizational meeting. I'd remind everybody, if you have one of these things, have it on silent or shut off, Four adoption minutes from the following Eldred City Council meetings. November 19, regular city council meeting. December 17, regular council meeting. Any errors or corrections?
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you. Manager Cole.
Couple items tonight. First, February 1st is the date for changes to the city's recycling program, which is fast upon us. Our Public Works folks have done a great job of pulling materials together and rather than me getting into the do's and don'ts, I refer the public to our website. They've made a great video showing the materials and the do's and don'ts of what to do just for, just as backup information. Ellsworth, like many communities, has been forced by the marketplace to limit certain recyclables. And come February 1st, these rules will go into play. And again, go to the website or call City Hall and get you the information. Other item, winter carnival is on Saturday, February 9th and Sunday, February 10th. And I assume maybe somebody on the Recreation Commission would like to talk about this, so I will smartly defer to them. And I will also defer to Counselor Moore on the announcement of the trail extension. So that abbreviates my report.
Committee reports. Anybody have committee meetings they need to talk about? Counselor Dale.
So the Recreation Committee met. Counselor Grindel and I attended. Downey's family YMCA, their basketball season is well underway. They're heading into the tournament season for the older kids. And the recreational basketball just got started and they have 54 teams, so it's pretty impressive. The ice rink is open. Times are posted on the Facebook site, which is the Ellsworth Ice Rink. You can, on there are times for regular skating, but there's also time set aside for pond hockey so that youth can get out and play that. And so the winter carnival that was just mentioned, rundown of activities on Friday, February 8th, will be a movie night at the Moore Center. Family dinner at 5:15, movie from 6:00 to 7:30. Saturday, February 9th, there will be, taking place at Woodlawn, there will be a food vendor there. The ice rink will be open all day. At 7:30, we'll start activities with a snowshoe race registration. Race will begin at 8:00. And I think it's about a two-mile course. 9:00 AM will be, snowmobile rides will begin until around noon. 9:00 AM registration for the cardboard sledding contest. 10:00 AM sledding competition will begin. From 4:00 to 6:30 will be open swim at the Y, all ages, families. 7:00 will be fireworks at the high school. And 8:00 will be open mic at the Grand. So start practicing. Sunday, February 10th, there's a ice fishing derby that's taking place, and that's actually taking place all weekend with weigh-ins taking place. And 9:00 AM will be the return of the Clambute Classic Pond Hockey Tournament where no skates are allowed, so what could possibly go wrong with that? It's a good, good time. Teams have fun, but they are hurt the next day. And I think that's, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
January 9th, I attended the, actually Counselor Phillips and I attended the Harbor Commission meeting. And Manager Cole was there to update us on the, the status of our project to extend the path, the Harbor Trail. And we got, you got a letter from the Agricultural Conservation Forestry Extension. I remember that correctly. And I think you implied that funds could very possibly be available and that we need to get to a final design and then work on it from there. The big, real big project at the Harbor is to change out the gas tank. And Andrew McCullough, the architect, came up with a newer design that would involve installing a longer tank, but narrower in diameter to allow it so that you could put it under the, under the parking lot. But depending on what the soil is, you wouldn't have to put it quite as deeply as you would a shorter, thicker tank. We're really excited about this because we think that selling both diesel and regular gas is going to bring a lot more motors in to buy gas, and it should show up in our profits for next year. The Harbor master gave a report saying that the Army Corps of Engineers will be wrapping up their survey of the, of the Harbor. And it's been quite a long time that we've been dealing with the filling in of the, of the channel down at the middle buoy, buoy number four. And it was kind of encouraging. It seems like the Army Corps is taking a little bit more active interest in helping us out down there, to the point where they suggested that they're going to look at the possibility of changing the channel somewhat, putting it slightly to the west so that maybe it won't fill in quite so quickly. There's also been some interest by members of the community to develop a, some kind of a symbol for the Harbor to be used in, you know, as a logo for events that are going on and so forth. So we're going to see how that goes. We haven't used the ice heaters very much, and that's a good thing because that means they aren't using any electricity. But the few times that we've had to use it, they work just fine. So I think this is going to be a very good thing. And finally, just a recap of something that was mentioned previously. The total fees collected for this past season was pretty good. It was $28,585. And we expect that to increase next year, all things being equal. That's it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Citizens comments. This is the time of the evening where you're invited to come to the podium, give us your name. You can talk to us for up to three minutes about anything that is not on the agenda. Anybody wish to speak? Thank you for coming, anyway. Presentation of awards, excuse me.
I was debating.
And you lost.
I waited too long, sorry. It wasn't working elsewhere. You know my plight that I have, and I don't like coming here to hear myself speak. I really don't. I'm very saddened by having to come here and speak. I have an issue of a neighbor deliberately pouring water onto my property. It's not a water runoff situation. The water didn't create the pipes, didn't create the avenue for it to run. It didn't jump into the pipes from the gutters, didn't jump into the downspout to the pipes, didn't get covered by tar. It was created by a person. I've had three counselors out there, a city manager, code enforcement officer, they all say it's water runoff. I don't get it. It's definitely a problem. And now I find evidence it may be ruining my garage because now separating from my I took a complaint. I do believe that complaint got half-heartedly thrown out, which is disgusting to me. I may be, some people call unreasonable person, a big mouth, a crazy person because I care about stuff, but I don't care what people think. I don't care what people think. But this is the problem. There's a state law that shows this problem. You have a property, even though it don't pertain to my situation because it belongs to a different type, a group of properties says it's a problem. You know, there's a saying, for evil to triumph only takes a few people to do nothing. I left something out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, the three counselors were not there at the same time, so it was not an illegal meeting. Okay, presentation of awards. We don't have any tonight. Consent agenda, I'll read down through. At this time, we've had a request from the Harbor Commission Chair to withdraw item 11. They're going to rethink that and bring back either February or March meeting. So can I have a motion to remove item 11?
No move. Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion from the agenda? All those in favor? Okay, 11's gone. Consent agenda is used for routine items. We'll go down through them and read them. If any counselor wants any of them discussed, we'll remove it from the consent agenda. We'll have one vote on the approved consent agenda when we're done. Item nine, Council Order 011900, request of the Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector for approval of a real estate purchase installment contract between the City of Ellsworth and Peter Cabanalus. Item 10, Council Order 011901, request of the Harbor Commission to accept a resignation letter from Arthur G. Callis Jr. with a term to expire on June 30, 2021. Gend item 12, Council Order 011903, appointment of Melissa Garland as the Ellsworth representative on the Frenchman Bay Regional Shellfish Committee. Item 13, Council Order 011904, request of the Recreation Commission to accept a resignation letter from Morgan Saro with a term to expire on June 30, 2019. Agenda item 14, Council Order 011905, request of the Housing Authority to appoint Jefferson Clark to the City of Ellsworth Housing Authority Board, term to expire on January 1, 2024. Item 15, Council Order 011906, request of the Housing Authority to appoint Eleanor Jones to the City of Ellsworth Housing Authority Board, term to expire January 1, 2024. 16, Council Order 011907, request of the Housing Authority to appoint Raymond Williams to the City of Ellsworth Housing Authority Board, term to expire January 1, 2024. Item 17, Council Order 011908, request of the Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector to accept payments on properties redeemed during the 30-day redemption period and authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quitclaim deeds. Any one of those items counsel want to take off and discuss? If not, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Counsel Hamilton. All, any, all those in favor? unanimous, thank you. New business, number 18, public hearings in action on the applications for issuance of the following business licenses. First one is Jeff and Diane Kelly-Lacos, DBA 86 this, 125 Main Street, to upgrade from a City Class C Victular and Liquor license to a City Class B Victular Liquor and Amusement and renewal of a State Restaurant Class III and IV Malt and Vinous Liquor License. Staff is all set with these. We have, on that one, we have all the signatures. Any questions from counsel? This is a public hearing open. Anybody wish to speak on this application for a license? I asked the question, because it's an upgrade, do they need to be here as new ones do? And the explanation was they're adding amusement, so it has nothing to do with the liquor license itself, so we allowed them not to be here. So public hearing is closed. Counsel action.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of 86 this, three and all. Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? Second one is GC Pizza Hut LLC, DBA Pizza Hut, 211 High Street, for renewal of a City Class C Victular and Liquor license and renewal of a State Restaurant Class IV Malt Liquor We have all the signatures on that one. Any questions of counsel? This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on the application for Pizza Hut? Public hearing is closed. Counsel action.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the relicensing of Ellsworth Pizza Hut.
Motion and a second. Discussion, all those in favor? unanimous? Next one is Susan Sherbal, DBA Dion's, 35 Eastwood Lane, for renewal of a Class C Victular and Liquor license and renewal of a State Restaurant Class III and IV Malt and Vinous Liquor License. We have a request in our packet from code enforcement and the fire inspector to not do this. We're going to extend their current license 90 days to allow them to get a, plan a correction on some issues that they have out there. This will allow them to remain open and functioning, but we'll hold the feet to the fire to get it done. We have a representative from the business here. Counselors have any questions? We've talked about this quite a bit in finance, and this is a way that we chose to do it is to give them, similar to what we did with a motel a couple of years ago, worked very, very well.
Do you want a motion on this?
I, I've got to go through the.
Okay.
Just for the record, a 90-day extension will start March 1st and May 31st. And as we did with the previous opportunity to do this, once the inspection is done, the city will absorb the cost of the second public hearing notice in the paper because we delayed them. We did that with the previous one, felt it was the right thing. And once they get inspected, we'll do that and schedule them on the next available agenda. But this way they can keep working. Any questions of counsel? The public hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak on this? Public hearing is closed. Counsel action.
Mr. Chairman, recommend approval of a 90-day extension to the city licenses for Susan Sherbal doing business as Dion's or Dion's?
Dion's.
Dion's, 35 Eastwood Lane for renewal, et cetera, of the licenses.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor? Next one, sideline sports bar, 367 State Street, Unit A, for a new City Class B license Victular Liquor and Amusement and a new State Restaurant Lounge Class XI Malt-Vinus Conspirators Liquor License. As required by our ordinance, would you introduce yourself, the owners?
Hi, Jen Barker.
Jen Barker.
Welcome. Thanks for choosing Ellsworth to have a business in. This is your FUD records.
What about the Grand?
Oh, I had checked that off. I'll go right back to that, if that's okay. Thank you for being here. Back with the Grand, Nick doesn't care. Sidelines meets all the requirements, all the signatures are on the application. There's some issues with sprinkler system, stuff like that, that we can.
Subjective.
We, we, we can authorize a license, just they won't get an occupancy permit until it meets all of us, so they can't use it. Any questions of counsel besides the Grand? Public hearing, anybody wish to speak on this? Public hearing closed. Counsel action.
Mr. Chairman, move approval?
Second.
Motion to second for approval. Further discussion? All those in favor? Backup one, the Grand, 165 Main Street, for renewal of a City Class B license Victular Liquor and Amusement and renewal of a State Other Auditorium Theater Class III IV Malt and Vinous Liquor License. All the signatures are on the application. Any questions from counsel? This is a public hearing open. Anyone wish to speak? Public hearing closed. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of the Grand for renewal of their license.
Second.
Motion to second for the discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 19, Council Order 011909, request of the police chief to approve the regional communication center third shift dispatch services agreement between the Hancock County Commissioners and the City of Ellsworth. Captain Byer, you going to speak or is the city manager?
Yeah. Captain, why don't you come up? I would, while Troy's coming up, I just mentioned that, as you know, this was the, a renewal of an agreement that was formed, I believe, two years ago. And it involves a 3% increase as set by the county commissioners, Captain?
Yes.
Yeah. That's, I believe, the only substantial change, is the 3% increase.
Yeah, he pretty much covered it. So it's a renewal every year. I think, like you said, there's an increase that's built into this, 3% for the year. It's billed, billed monthly for a total at the end of the year.
Yeah. I would add that I spoke to the police chief before he went away to the FBI Academy about this and said, "It's working well for you." And he said, "Absolutely," and wanted to move forward another year.
Any questions of the captain?
Well done.
Great job.
What's your pleasure?
Chairman, move to approve the agreement between the City of Ellsworth, Maine and the Hancock County Commissioners for the Regional Communication Center Third Shift Dispatching Services as presented.
Second. Motion to second for the discussion. All those in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Item 20, Council Order 011910, request of the fire chief to approve a lease purchase for 26 Scott X3 Pro self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA units, and a Scott Revolve air fill station and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Chief?
Good evening. Richard Dove, Fire Chief. As you know, we have a program in place now that replaces our air packs on a rotational basis to keep current with new and updated equipment. Last year, when I proposed the budget for this fiscal year's purchase of that, we were approached by a vendor and the manufacturer of the packs that we use, basically with a promotional deal that got us into a much newer pack. And the gist of this is to replace the entire fleet of them and then sell off the ones that we currently are using at various levels. The advantages of these, this new product that they're proposing to us is it has several safety features involved in it. First and foremost, the straps that strapped it onto the firefighter's body are removable off these packs that allow us to launder them. This is a big issue that we're trying to battle in all areas of everything that we do to reduce contaminants and mostly carcinogens that are attached to the clothing and these packs when we fight fires. Currently, we do have a dedicated washing machine for our turn-on gear, and that would be the, the use for, the way that we would clean these harnesses off these air packs. There's a couple other key safety features that come with this promotion or this proposal that they have. One is a pack tracker system that allows us to be able to, on the outside of the building, monitor each of these packs as the firefighters are using them, so we can keep track of their air management. If they're using an excessive amount of air, we can signal to them and if they're not paying quite enough attention to it, we can signal them and tell them that they need to come out of the building. If there's an imminent collapse or something of that nature, we can also notify each individual pack user and their pack alerts them to evacuate a building. A current way that we do that now is we sound the air horns on the trucks that may or may not be heard depending on the physical location that the firefighter is in, and especially some of the bigger buildings. So that's kind of in a nutshell, this whole process. You do have a lot of background information that gives you more detailed information on that. Be happy to answer any questions, so you better understand that.
Chief, can you, you don't have to go through every number, but you've given us some backup that shows a 10-year current SCBA replacement program.
Correct.
And the associated costs. And then the associated costs with this new program that has a 10-year bumper-to-bumper warranty on the packs. Could you just give the public some of those numbers so you see this is a, this is a net savings?
Yes, absolutely. So I laid out our current replacement program over a 10-year span with a slight cost of in, cost increase of the cost of each of the packs, so you can see that, with an estimated maintenance and repair plan on the existing packs that we would currently have. And that total over a 10-year cycle comes up to $323,500. The proposed replacement program for the purchase, lease purchase of 26 air packs and also a air fill station totals $236,399. So that's a potential decrease in appropriations over those 10 years of $87,101. That does not include what we could gain by the sale of our existing packs, and we do have some interest already in, in 15 of those packs and 20 others that we could still sell, and those monies could come back and help pay for this project.
Anyone else, questions of the chief?
Well, I debated asking you to do this, but that amount of money is a lot of money.
Certainly is.
And I, we've talked about it, we know how important these are. But maybe you could just say a few words for anybody who's watching out there as to why these air packs are so important. You said some things, but just generally speaking.
Obvious to us, maybe not necessarily so obvious to everyone, these air packs are our lifeline. We are bringing fresh air with us as we enter into a burning building where the atmosphere is what we call ideal H, immediately dangerous to life and health. So if you're in a building that is on fire and you're breathing the smoke and the contaminants, it's going to kill you. These packs provide us that lifeline to be able to get into a building, do our jobs, and be able to go home at the end of the day.
Thank you. One of the things that I've mentioned as we've talked with the chief in the last month and a half, two months, well, since last budget year, is this allows the department to standardize all their air packs to one type, one model, 10-year bumper-to-bumper warranty with the electronics. It comes with a heads-up display, so you don't have to look down and look at your gauge and look at your gauge on your regulator, it's right here in your vision. And a few years ago, for the people that were here, we did this with our masks. We standardized all the masks to meet the newest standard. So everybody didn't have to get fit-tested on three different masks. You had one, you knew what it was, and you were really good with it, so... On its own information, I think this is a great project. But what nailed it for me was, we could show with the sale of half of these packs, $110,000 sale coming back with the reduction in the cost over 10 years. I think it's a win-win for the city, and I'm supportive of it.
One last key component to some of the financial side of this, we have 38 existing air cylinders that are gonna come to their end of life this calendar year. That means they need to be thrown in the trash and new ones purchased. And that totals in its own $33,250 worth of bottles. So instead of investing in those bottles for the current program, that money can be better spent, I think, in newer technology.
Anyone else? If there's anyone in the public who wants to speak on one of these agenda items, just get my attention. I'm not ignoring you, but if you want to get up and speak, let me know. If there's no other questions, anybody wish to form a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the Fire Chief to lease purchase 26 Scott X3 Pro Self-contained Breathing Apparatus SCBA Units from FireTech and Safety and a Scott Revolve Air Fill Station from IPS in the amount of $236,399 and to authorize the City Manager to Enter Into a Municipal Lease Purchase Agreement with Gorham Leasing Group with an Annual Installment Payment of $52,141 for five years. And also authorize a Council Order 011909 per the attached written order.
Do we have a second?
I believe it's 10. Is it 011910?
The agenda and the item don't appear to line up.
You were right, John, that's how it's written, I just think it's misprinted.
Well, I was kinda wondering, I figured that they don't make mistakes in the office.
They don't make mistakes in the office. I'm sure it was a computer error.
The actual, the actual obligation is 09.
But 09 refers to the Police Chief's request. I think it's misprinted on the, on the, on the packet.
Okay. On mine, authorizing lease financing up to $236,000.
But the order on the agenda kicked it one more, so she's accurate.
Which is in sequence on the agenda.
Yeah, so staff will take care of that before it gets signed and sent?
I need to rescind Council Order...
Could you stop from the beginning?
Just change the order number.
That final comment, the order number 011910.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? unanimous? Thanks very much, Chief. Number 21, Council Order 011911, Request of the Deputy City Manager to Award a $3,55,400 general obligation bond, GOB, for various projects that were previously financed through bond anticipation notes. Miss Moat?
Thank you. So back in 2016, the City of Ellsworth authorized an issuance of $1,955,400 of its general obligation bonds. This was for the new fire engine, new compactors and baleers at the transfer station and recycling center, portion of State Street, some sewer improvement, sidewalk upgrades, also the intersection of State Street and Forest Avenue, as well as Forest Avenue extension, is what we call Lee Jock Street now. And in 2018, the City Council authorized an issuance of $1.1 million. And this was for the drainage project located on State Street and Forest Avenue, some upgrades to the Bayside Road, as well as the Harbor fuel tanks and the Water Street parking lot. While each of these bans are now coming to maturity and we needed to refinance them for permanent financing for a 10-year program, we did send it out to seven local banking institutions and received six back with the lowest interest rate from Key Bank at 3.061%. I did want to note, this does not require a public hearing just because it's already been authorized by the City Council.
Questions of the Deputy City Manager?
Just for the record, for the public, could you just explain a little bit in terms of that differentiation between the ban, permanent financing, why you enter into a ban?
Absolutely, yep. So we borrow an anticipation note. So while we're working on the construction project, we have an estimate before we go into a project. So we have that estimate, and once the project comes to completion, we have better numbers and we can borrow the real numbers. So then, and so anticipation notes are borrowed on a short-term basis, and the max that the city has in its charter is three years. So then you go into permanent financing, which has, is usually a longer term.
Any other questions? If you want to get up and ask?
You said there's no public comment, so I just...
No, no, it's no public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'm in public hearing.
Divis, Jermaine to this issue, yes, sir?
Yep. She was talking about that some of that money was set aside to do the compactors and stuff after the dump. They never were done.
They're measured, they're installed the end of February.
I'm sorry, what?
They've been measured, we have a contractor.
Oh, okay.
They'll be done the end of February.
All right, now, also there was additional funds asked to do that work, is that correct? A couple meetings ago?
No, that's where we awarded the contract, I believe.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay. I just, I was trying to figure that out, because I know that there was budgeted out back then.
Yeah.
It was never done, then I thought there was, okay.
Yeah, because I believe, Gordon, that the comment will be, "Funds come from future borrowing,"
Right.
is what we use, and that's the future borrowing idea.
And we also had some budgeted amount that we had been collecting over a period of a few years, and then we needed the additional for the baler and the compactors.
Okay, get you.
Anybody else? What's your pleasure? You're not gonna say no to him?
Mr. Chairman, move to award the general obligation bond, low bid to Key Bank at an interest rate of 3.061% for a $3,55,400 general obligation bond as presented?
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? Thank you, ma'am. 22, Council Order 011912, Request of the Finance Director to Withdraw $32,000 from the Capital Reserve Account to Reimburse Cost of an Officer's Training at the Police Academy.
All right, so this is our ongoing battle to get us up to staff with hiring Levi Soper of the Southwest Harbor Police Department. He's an academy graduate, he's been at the academy for about a year and a half. So he was once a traffic and parking enforcement officer for us, so he, he's familiar with the area, familiar with our computer system, because Southwest uses the same system that we have. So the money is basically prorating for his time, reimbursement back to Southwest for his time at the academy.
By State Stat, you're right?
Right, yes.
I'd suggest that this is probably cheaper than sending one, training one, and paying one, and travel one.
Yeah, and while he's already trained, we should be able to get him on patrol, should cut down overtime costs.
Excellent.
That type of thing.
This is good value for the taxpayers of Ellsworth.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions?
Motion.
Motion.
Move to approve the request of the Finance Director to Withdraw $32,000 from the Capital Reserve Account to Reimburse Cost of an Officer's Training at the Police Academy.
Second.
Motion in the second, discussion? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you. All right, number 23, Executive Session, is it's us, Labor Contracts in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6D.
Mr. Chairman, move to go into Executive Session?
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all those in favor? For the public's input, we will have no action after this. We will just come out of Executive Session and adjourn, so you folks can go home. Thank you very much.